Please join me in saying the pleasure of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Misty, will you please call roll?
Georgia Holmes, President. Bob Nelson.
Here.
Martin Meyer. Arlene Kane.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Carol Ann Schwarzenbauer.
Here.
Skylar Weiselman.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, you do have an agenda before you and ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Again, a reminder that if anyone does have a conflict of interest on any of the items being discussed, I'd ask that you would make that known at the time. And also, just want to remind all the council, please speak into your microphones. These microphones are not quite so sensitive as... So, please speak into them so the audience can hear what's being said. I will accept a motion to approve the agenda at this time.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and approved the agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have in your package the minutes from the October 16th council meeting. You should have had an opportunity to review those. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the October 16th council meeting. Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to claims. Item A, bills in between. Accept a motion to approve the bills in between.
Motion to approve the bills in between.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. There any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, current claims. Misty, I believe there's a correction to the current claims. If you could explain that to the council, please.
Yes, thank you. The current claims batch you have in front of you is for $1,256,655.52. We have a change on page seven, second from the bottom. Ace Steel and Recycling. We have a decrease in that claim from $533.94 down to $381.75. It's a credit, it's a result of some returned items. So, your total claims that you're reviewing for approval are $1,256,503.33.
Okay, with that correction, I would accept a motion to accept the current claims as corrected.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims as corrected with an amendment.
I'll second that.
Let me get to... On page five. About halfway down, Zachary Schaefer. I'd like to remove that for further discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved to amend the current claims as corrected. To remove... Could you repeat that again?
On page five, Zachary Schaefer for $2,000. I'd like to remove that for further discussion.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment?
I second that.
Second, okay. Been moved and... We do amend the current claims, removing that item for further discussion. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a question about page two. The large tree removal and clean out the River Run Estates.
That was a tree... That was a tree at Yumicor Park that we had received a call from the state forester that it was... He was called out to inspect the tree. It was a three-pronged cottonwood tree that was extending over a trailer home at River Run Estates. He called and told me that it was a hazard tree and had to be removed. We then got a call from River Run Estates. The owners there complaining that we needed to take care of our hazard tree. So, we went through the procurement process. Edwards... Elton Zorn ended up getting the low price for that and he took it down. He did leave a large sum that he was afraid that he didn't have enough heavy equipment to remove the rest of it, so he will be... Our crew will be removing the end of that last piece.
And this comes out of the budget where?
That comes out under Parks.
They have another budget?
They've told me, yeah, they told me that they did and we signed up a deal for that.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we do have an amended motion for the current claims. That is, to remove the item of $2,000 for further discussion on page five. All those in favor of the amended approval of the current claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And Misty, if you'd noted that, to clear that on the next agenda. And move on to the Wells Fargo credit cards. Accept a motion to approve those charges.
Motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card charges.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Wells Fargo credit card charges. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to communications from the public. We were to have a presentation from... On a solar power proposal from Gen Pro Energy Solutions. They were unable to make it down here tonight due to the weather. They had a snowstorm up in the Sturgis-Piedmont area and the roads were hazardous and then they were unable to make it tonight. So, we will postpone that until the next meeting. And again, just for the council's benefit and for the public, the city is considering to go to a solar power on several of our city businesses to augment our electrical power. The presentation was to be given to the council, and it will be given to the council, so the entire council and the public, so that you can see and understand what we are proposing. We will then take some time for the entire council to be able to review that proposal. And then, I would submit that we'd make two decisions that the council will have to make. First of all, to give Gen Pro the permission to go ahead and do the final engineering study along with getting the final financial proposal put together. That would come back, be briefed to the council for review. And then, once that is done and presented, the council would have the final authority to approve that proposal or not. We would hope that the timing would be that if it were approved, we'd begin installation in the summer. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Do you think they'll be coming to give us?
We're... Hopefully, it'd be scheduled for the next council meeting.
Okay.
That they'll be to give the presentation. And then, we'll have some time to digest that presentation. I don't want to have a vote immediately after they've given that, but you'll have a chance to ask them some questions and so forth. Are there any communications from the public for those that are in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel actions. I'd accept a motion to approve items A through J at this time.
I'll make a motion to accept personnel items A through J.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve personnel actions A through J. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to committee reports, administrative and finance. Carol Ann?
We met today. Old business, we discussed a request to change the airport manager position to full-time. There was a request made for statistics numbers for how busy the airport is from December 1st to March 1st, and he's going to get back to that with us. Kim's going to help him with that, come up with those numbers. Discussion on a sample media policy. They're going to work on that and get that back to the next meeting. I think we've all received copies of that. If you have any questions, get in touch with Misty. New business, the mayor discussed Gen Pro, what he told you just now. He'll probably talk about it more later. We also discussed the development coordinator position. The county committee approved, going on with that and get that posted as a new job. Misty or the finance officer gave us a monthly review. She also reviewed the supplemental appropriation ordinance. She discussed potential investments, the 501 fund. Also taking $20 that's left in the... It was given by Final Healthy, Finally Healthy, and that's probably going to go into the Bandstand or whatever that's called fund. We reviewed the resolution to set part-time breaks and will be receiving an email about the procurement policy for 2018 and the personnel policy for 2018. And we'll meet on December the 4th.
Okay, thank you, Carol Ann. Airport advisory committee, Georgia.
Well, I went up, but it was changed till Monday, so I couldn't come. But, George, I think you have...
Yes, and I'll report on some of that in the mayor's report. Thank you.
Yeah.
Custer Falls Riverways Management District, Ron?
Next meeting will be 9 November, 7 PM here at the Miller Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission?
Did not meet. They'll meet on December the 5th, 5:00 at the library.
And Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Skylar?
We did have a meeting. We discussed membership notification. We discussed some new spa ideas and we are planning for the closure. No date has been set yet. Our next meeting will be November 16th.
Okay, thank you. Parks Recreation, Beautification and Culture Development. Marty is not here tonight. Kim, do you have a summary of the meeting that was held today that you could share?
Yeah, Marty had asked me to attend on his behalf. We talked about a number of different things that included everything from the highway project and how it will affect Centennial Park. We talked about the Canalever sidewalk and changes to the river and how that will impact our community. And we talked about discussion points regarding what steps we can take as communities and business owners to talk to the DOT when they come through and make our interests known to them. We talked about Yumicor Park and some things that have to happen there. We talked about work orders that have been put in. Mammoth Springs and the... We're still searching for where it comes from and where it goes to. We know the holding area, so that's still in a mystery to everyone involved with that. We talked a little bit more about the roadside bathroom and trying to see if we'll have enough time to get the shelter put up yet this year. It depends really on weather at this point. And we discussed... Oh, the new trail construction with the expansion of the Freedom Trail and what the intended deadline for that would be. We're hoping by the end of this month it would be completed. We just have some final filling and grading. We've gotten a great donation from the airport for fill material and recycled milling so that we're going to have a nice milled surface for that and it'll be rolled in place. So, a lot of busy things still happening even late in the season for Parks and Rec and a great group that keeps things moving.
Thank you. Planning and zoning commission, Arlene?
Planning and zoning meets the third Wednesday of each month at 7:00 PM in City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Public safety, Bob?
Public safety now on October 18th. Mayor Cotty was there, Kim was there, Misty, Chief Close and myself. Couple of old business items to keep you updated on. The review of the city's animal ordinance, you have that in your packet tonight for voting. When we get to it, there's one word that needs to be added to it so it doesn't significantly change anything. It looks like in my editing, I left it out. I'll cover that when we get there. The extending the yellow street marking on North River Street by City Hall. I believe that's been taken care of already, so that one's been accomplished. New business items, chief of police gave us an update on a number of things. The DARE program received a $1,000 donation from Coffee Cup, which should be enough money to fund the program for the next two years. Officer Bookhold is expected to graduate from the police academy in November. Reserve Officer Shively will be patrolling... Patrol the city neighborhoods on his bicycle during Halloween. And the police department has increased their traffic enforcement of 23rd Street during school hours. The police reserve unit that we've talked about, that is in your packet for review. To highlight some of the things in there for your consideration, the recommendation that's come out of the public safety is to increase the current reserve officers from two to five. An initial trial period for two years to test it out, see how it works. All of this is explained in more detail in your packet. The initial necessary basic equipment would be purchased by the city and the reserve officers would sign an agreement to remain a reserve officer for two years from a date of your certification or reimburse the city for equipment supplied by the city. So, those are kind of the highlights of what's in there. Review that and like to have it as an agenda item for council's discussion and vote the next city council meeting. The neighborhood watch groups, the police department will put together a list of guidelines for individuals or groups to use that are interested in forming neighborhood watch groups. We reviewed the Chapter 23 Taxi Caps and Buses. Some of the things that were discussed about that is to update an application, update the application rather than rewording a lot of the ordinance. Looking at the insurance model, make sure that's an appropriate increase in the license fee. Adding language for Uber and Lyft and possibly changing the term to five years. The next committee, public safety, will be November 15th, 2:00 at City Hall.
Okay, Bob, thank you very much. And I particularly want to thank you, Bob, for all the work that you did on putting together the proposal for the Reserve Police Officer Program. I know you did a lot of research on that and coordination and really appreciate the extra time that you put in. And again, just remind the council to review that. We'll be ready to discuss whether we want to implement that in the community. Thank you. Public works, Bob?
Public works met October 31st. Mayor Cotty, Kim, Tracy, and myself. Old business, the sludge watering device. The grant started for that equipment happened the week of October 23rd. Factory representatives were on site the week of October 30th for the final testing. The sewer staff, city sewer staff has received the training on the equipment. Boulder Falls construction update, the project is almost complete. Asphalt is down. A guardrail will be added to Cardinal Drive to increase safety. Public parking along the South River Street. The city crews have put gravel down to fill the low spots on that to make it more usable for parking, so thank you to the city crews for that. The surplus building of surplus property of available city lots. The timing of the auction is being coordinated with Bradine. The contract position for meter readings, that's in your proposal or your packet for votes tonight. The sewer line extension Fresno Avenue, there's also an easement in your packet for voting on that. The fact that a property along where the sewer line is going to be extended, that property has changed. The new property owner is much more willing to work with the city to make it easier for the city to extend that sewer line. Conversion of solar. That what... The presentation was going to happen tonight, so we'll wait for the next one. The Freedom Trail expansion, city crew is working on that with an expected completion time of late winter. The request for a proposal to hire engineering firms to design the Canalever sidewalks. Three engineering firms have expressed an interest to design a Canalever sidewalk. And then, Kim's already talked a little bit about the tree removal at Yumicor Park. Next public safety will be November 4th, 14th, 2:00 at City Hall.
Again, thank you, Bob, for the very detailed report. Southern economic development, Georgia, could you give an update on that? I know you... Did you go to the...
Yeah, I did go. I guess I wasn't prepared to say too much, but...
Yeah, I like putting you on the spot.
Yeah, you do.
I'm sorry.
Well, I guess there's a few things I've been working on. We did have... They did have an open house for all the new businesses that are coming into town and there are five of them, new shops that will be opening up here soon. So, everybody keep your eyes open for that. A lot of positive things. All of our buildings on River Street are going to be changing, so... But, that was a real good opening and everybody enjoyed the night, I think. And we have a lot more.
No, that's good news and we appreciate that update, Georgia. Thanks.
Will Georgia continue to be our councilman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skylar?
Our next meeting will be November 13th at 5:00.
And the Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Next meeting will be 14 November at 7:00 PM, Ospring Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay. Thank you, council, for all the reports and the work that you do behind the scenes. Appreciate it. Moving on in our agenda to ordinances. We'll have first reading of Ordinance 1183, the ordinance to provide for the amendment and revision of Chapter 4A of the Animals and Fowl Ordinance. Again, the overall general changes are to help assist in protecting our people against vicious animals and also protecting the animals so that they aren't unnecessarily put down, also dealing with how humanely they're put down. You do have a copy of that ordinance in your packages and, Bob, I think you have an amendment to that, or change that you wanted added to that. I guess, first of all, we can take a motion to approve the ordinance and then, as it is written, or you can make a motion to include that change in the ordinance. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1183, an ordinance providing for the amendment and revision of Chapter 4-8, Animals and Fowl. It's adding one word. If that's considered an amendment, then I'll also have that.
Where is it? We're waiting.
On page three. Halfway down. An animal that causes a serious bodily injury to a person may be humanely bio-licensed. No, I left out "humanely euthanized" bio-licensed veterinary.
I'll second that with this.
Doesn't significantly change anything.
I'll second that with the word euthanized.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the first reading with the addition of the word euthanized in that amendment that were... The ordinance that was left off. Are there any discussion, questions, or comments?
I think it's cleared up quite a bit. Thanks.
Okay, again, Bob, thank you for all the hard work that you've done in putting this together and coordinating it. Hearing no further discussion, I'd ask all those in favor of the ordinance, the first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, a motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have Item A, discussion and possible motion to approve the 2018 Retail Wine, Retail Liquor, Packaged Liquor Renewal applicants. You see a list of those licenses in your package. I did give Chief Close a call today to double-check and ensure that there were no problems at any of those businesses listed on that sheet. We went through each one and he noted that there had been no issues with any of those that hold those licenses. I would accept the motion to approve that Retail Wine, Retail Liquor, Packaged Liquor Renewal.
I'll make a motion to accept the liquor license for 2018 applications.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and we accept the licenses. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. And that motion does carry. Moving on, we have a possible motion and discussion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from CS Incorporated, doing business as the Winter Circle. And they want to serve the annual ag banquet to be held here at the Mueller Civic Center on November 18th. I'd accept a motion to approve that temporary license at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that temporary alcoholic beverage license to Winter Circle. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As Bob mentioned, we have a possible motion and discussion to approve the utility easement on 1027 Fresno for a sewer expansion.
I'll make a motion to approve the utility easement on 1027 Fresno for sewer expansion.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that utility easement on 1027 Fresno. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Again, I'd just like to make one comment on this. As Bob mentioned, this eliminates a substantial amount of extra work that we would have to do to provide that sewage line in that area. And even as a result of our discussion, to do that, there's been some interest in some additional holes or at least a couple of buildings that might possibly go up on that in that area. So, I think it's an important thing that we consider and approve this easement.
Servicing a house that has a fail-in sector system, so it's a fundamentally good thing as well.
Good, good point. Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of this approving this utility easement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to award our meter reading service to Jessica Prin and approve related contract for the rest of 2017 through 2018. Just for your information, you do have information in your package. We did have two applicants. One bid was for $2,333.33. Jessica Prin bid $1,085. Jessica Prin bid one thousand zero, one thousand eighty-five dollars and also had attached some positive recommendations from previous employers. I would accept a motion then to award that water reading service to Jessica at this time.
Make a motion to approve the water reading contract to Jessica Prin in the amount of one thousand eighty-five dollars per month.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the meter reading service to Jessica at a thousand eighty-five dollars per month. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And before we move on to the next item, I just want to thank in particular Barb Benson. She volunteered to, without a meter reader during the month of November. I think she's picked the worst days to go out and read those meters, but we appreciate the extra additional service that she's done along with other members of the water department. And they, you see them, give them a big thank you because they've gone far above and beyond. Moving on to item E, we have a possible motion and discussion to authorize the finance officer to restrict forty-five thousand dollars of two twelve fund balance for future expenses relating to the Highway three eighty-five twenty twenty road construction.
I'll make a motion to authorize our finance officer to restrict forty-five thousand dollars from the two one two funds for future expenses related to the South Dakota DOT Highway three eighty-five twenty twenty road construction.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we authorize our finance officer to transfer those funds to, for expenses related to the highway program. Are there any comments, questions, or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on, we are looking for a possible motion and discussion to approve the automatic budget supplement of sixty-four thousand five hundred and one dollars and forty-four cents to additional sales tax fund, airport improvement, project number two one two, two one two zero zero four five four two zero zero, or two, two zero, for constructions of the partial taxiway. The revenue is being received from the federal and state airport improvement grant, three dash four six dash zero zero two zero dash twelve dash two sixteen. And again, this is the final part of the air force, airports taxiway construction project.
I think there's still some retainage and another payment, so it's not the final one.
It's not the final, okay.
We have received this revenue already.
I'll make a motion that we approve the automatic budget supplement of sixty-four thousand five hundred and one dollars and forty-four cents to the additional sales tax fund for the airport improvement, two one two two one two zero zero four five four two oh for constructional partial parallel taxiway revenue that was received from the federal and state airport improvement grant, three forty-six zero zero two oh, one two two oh one six.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that budget supplement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to surplus a sharp copier and two complete and five partial flush valves, a floor washer, two vacuums, and one control box and speaker for an E.V. sound system from the library. This would be part of our surplus auction coming up in December. I'll accept a motion at that time to surplus these items.
I'll make the motion to surplus the sharp copier, arm two oh seven, two complete and partial slung flush valves, a floor washer, two vacuums, and one control box and speaker for an E.V. sound system from the library.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we surplus these items. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have in your packages a travel request from Chief Close to attend an International Association of Chiefs Police Conference in Orlando, Florida. And that would be in two thousand eighteen in October, so it's almost a year away. But what Chief Close is applying for is a scholarship to attend that. So the expenses, the vast majority of those expenses would be taken care of via that scholarship. I accept a motion to approve that travel request at this time.
I'd like to make that motion adding the words, all right, to approve the travel request from my close to attend the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference in Orlando, Florida, pending his approval for the scholarship.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor, is our second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that travel request for Chief Close to attend that conference in Orlando, pending approval of his scholarship request. Do we want to understand what we're voting on? Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, we have a possible motion and discussion for our finance officer, Misty, to attend the Black Hills Area Finance Officers Association Quarterly Meeting in Rapid City on December seventh.
Motion to approve the travel request from Finance Officer Misty Summers Walton to attend the Black Hills Area Finance Officers Association Quarterly Meeting in Rapid City on twelve seven seventeen.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we send Misty to that quarterly meeting. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, our finance officer report, Misty.
Thank you. In the first meeting of the month, in your council packets, you have the financial reports provided, including the year-to-date profit and loss summary report, your fund summary report, cash balance report, and the investment reports. Just like to point out in those financial reports that it does appear that we have a very large amount of money in our checking account, but you did just approve close to two million dollars in bills and these batch of claims. So as we're doing these very large projects and finishing off our partial parallel taxiway and paving the roads and building blocks, we have received revenue that's going right out to pay those expenses. That's just something that I noted might be beneficial to point out. If you have any questions about any of the numbers in any of these reports, please don't hesitate to ask. And just so that everyone is aware, the departments each get their expenditure reports monthly as well. And those are available for view by council in the Blue Binder and City Hall at any time also. So if you wanted more detailed reports, online items, as opposed to these more generalized statements, just come in and I'll direct you to the book. On that note of the very large payments, we have been taking the advances from road development and getting the construction progress meetings held with all stakeholders present before we release any of those funds. So we get the revenue in, we have those meetings and approve the payments, and then you get the payments in front of you to approve. The city surplus auction you've heard talked about for, in the committee reports, for the properties that are involved and for our departments that have excess items that we've deemed surplus. I'd like to say it's been real easy to get that scheduled, but it hasn't. We did change the dates. Initially, it was scheduled in mid-November, but we haven't even started advertising for that yet. And we didn't feel like we would be getting a fair shape with good advertising to have the date that early. So it's been postponed to December sixth through the twelfth. As a reminder, it's an online-only auction. It's going to be advertised on South Dakota Auctions, Midwest Auction, Auction Zip, and the Braden social media pages, along with paper ads in the Rapid City Journal, Northern Hills Group, Hot Springs Star, and Shadr newspapers. They also mentioned doing some target marketing for our street sweeper. We were approached by the county to combine our surplus auctions. They expressed an interest and stated they'd pay for half of the advertising expense. And we see no reason not to combine with them and include their stuff with our stuff for that auction. So hopefully that'll give the auctioneer enough time to get all that advertising done. But ours comes first. We'd like to combine with them if we can. We've discussed in finance office reports, the new claim vouchers, they've been received. We're currently using up the last of our supplyable purchase orders. The edits that will be mailed out to the procurement policy are mostly due to the implementation of this new form and the just the changing of the wording, not the policy we follow. And in addition to the procurement policy, we're going to be sending out a draft of some updates to the personnel policy. We've done a lot of work to that policy year over year. There's not a lot of changes we're recommending for two thousand eighteen. So far, the only major changes include adding a social media policy. That was a recommendation of the municipal league and our insurer, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. So we're just kind of hashing out what their recommended words were compared to what we think we need in our city. So I will be sending that draft out too for review. It won't be on your council agendas till December. So you have plenty of time to read through it, see if there's anything else you want to update. Our insurance provider, our health insurance provider, Wilmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, has notified the city that the health insurer fee that was suspended last year by the federal government will be reinstated effective January twenty eighteen. As a result, our premiums will increase by three point four percent. Currently, at our monthly bill now, that's going to be about a hundred dollars a month. Increase to our about twenty-two thousand dollar a month bill for health insurance premium for our employees will also be subject to a change in premium in May when our annual renewal starts. So that can be an increase or decrease. We'll have them for decreases. We have the increase in the speed. A draft of the proposed changes to the existing bid ordinance is on the information-only side of your council packets. This document doesn't have the changes in color that you're used to since it is a complete repeal and replace. We've worked with our city attorney to get that language to match what the bid board was recommending. Our last ordinance established those that are included by name and address of their hotel. We've had ownership changes and new bed and breakfasts opened in our town that have expressed an interest in participating in that. We see no reason to restrict those that accept transient guests from collecting that bid tax and contributing to that group. If you have any feedback or questions about that, please share. It will be on the next council agenda for a first reading. It has been reviewed with the bid board and provided, and I have not received any concerns about the document from them. And then the final two thousand seventeen supplemental appropriation ordinance is also on the information-only side of your folder for this meeting. It will be in the November twentieth agenda for its first reading. Due to timing constraints with readings and passages of ordinance, it's important that this ordinance is fully understood and passes with both its first and second reading if we are to have the adequate time to get that appropriation done. That's why you have it for information now, although it is subject to change as each department head finalizes their review of their end-of-October expenditures with their expectations of projects that still may be completed this year to make sure that we've got enough money appropriated for those things. If there are any significant changes to the copies that you have in your information side only, I will make sure you're aware of those before the meeting so we can hash that out and talk about any questions that you might have. We're planning year-end stuff already. It doesn't seem like it's quite time to do that, but we are. So inventory and audit, making sure that we have all our ducks in a row, all our i's dotted and t's crossed. We're working on those kinds of things in the finance office now in preparation to start two thousand eighteen with the bank. I'm still looking for response from at least a little more than half of the council on the Evans Pond Mineral Springs Bond Advance refunding offer. Thank you, Bob, Marty, and Georgia, who've so far given me their opinion. And so far, the opinions seem to be that at this time, we're not interested in pursuing that. If you have a different opinion than that, please let me know, but that's what I'm going to go with based on the feedback that I've gotten so far. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Misty. Moving on with our city administrator report, Kim.
Well, it's been a pretty busy couple of weeks here. I finally have met with all the department heads. Really got to know everybody better on a more, you know, supervisor level, really talking about what each department and location needs. Starting to work with George on plans on trying how to do a little bit more in team building. There's some groups within the city that feel very isolated, so we're going to try and bridge those gaps and make sure that everybody feels connected to what's happening here and what's happening within the council. That's all going really good. The big couple of things that are on the plate right now is the DOT highway meetings. The meetings have been held for the south portion of the highway reconstruction project for all properties, South and University Avenue. They were held on November fourth and fifth. The DOT highway will be holding, highway meeting will be held for the north section of the project, North and University Avenue, on November twenty-ninth and thirtieth. We are property owners for that project and we will be meeting with them. Tracy, George, and I will be meeting with the DOT officers on the twenty-ninth and then have a utility meeting on the thirtieth. Before that, property owners or shop owners along that section will be met by me personally. I'll be trying to go and meet with everybody to go over some of the talking points, things that they should be considering for their business, things to talk about. But specifically going over the things that could really impact the area, including the cantilevered sidewalk for safety reasons and expanding the right-of-way to meet the requirements that the DOT has for their highway widths that are not currently met because of the narrowness of our roadway. I'll be trying to just give them some good talking points so people feel comfortable when they stand in front of the DOT and have an idea of what really their rights are, what opportunities there exist in this project, and what other things that the DOT can offer. In every type of highway job like this, they do have set aside money for supporting the local businesses, which include everything from signage and other fires, things like that, that can help them to sustain their business through the construction project. We also are meeting, been trying to meet with the Army Corps of Engineers about the highway project impacts to the flood project that goes through our town. That's the big flood walls and the impacts that we're going to be having with two bridge replacements as well. We have some other things that we need to talk to them about for maintenance. And so I've been spending a fair amount of time trying to get that together and work with them. The hurricanes down in Texas and Florida pulled them away for a while and hopefully we'll be able to get with them, get the required memorandum of understanding so that we can go ahead and continue with the engineering that we need to continue with the portions of the project that affect the walls with the highway project. I think those are the biggest ones right now. I'm filling in with a lot of other things. I appreciate everybody's patience with me as I try and juggle everything all at once. But we did have some good news at the Evans Finance meeting today, so we'll be able to get the new development coordinator position posted ASAP.
Great, thank you, Kim. And again, really appreciate the way you've stepped in and hit the ground running, even though you have to wear two hats, none of them have been falling off. So we appreciate all your, all your hard work. Thanks.
Mayor O'Callaghan?
Yes.
I have a question for Kim, if I can.
Go ahead.
Did I understand you to say two bridge replacements?
Yeah, that was the last big surprise at our last DOT meeting. They had stated we were on the project of, process of doing the design work for the Jennings Bridge.
Yes.
And one of the DOT engineers higher up that we had not seen before mentioned that the Minnacada Bridge is... that the Minnetoka Bridge is also being scheduled for replacement because of its condition as well. We're hoping to push that off well beyond the highway project, because that's an awful lot for a town our size to try and finance. So we're trying to also leverage that with the DOT to try and create some reasonable expectation of what a town our size can do. So we'll be getting you more information on that one as it comes along.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
I just happened to be at that meeting. Weren't they saying it would save us money to do them both at the same time? That we really, the Minnetoka Bridge is almost in worse shape than the other one?
That's what they said, but it's one of those things that, yeah, it would, if they did them both at the same time, one, we don't have the designs done. We have the Jennings Bridge design done now. They haven't even started the work on the Minnetoka. We haven't even gotten an engineer for that one yet. So we were hoping that we could get the DOT to step up and do more financing as part of the overall highway project. And that doesn't look like that's a possibility. Since we have the Jennings Bridge done, I think that one might end up going first. I don't think there's gonna be much in the way of savings overall. They had, they had said that. I, I don't see how that could be, because we're still gonna have to replace them and we're still gonna have to do the 80/20 financing.
Unless it's in the engineering.
Maybe that's where it would come in, but I don't see any substantial savings.
We would not have really a savings to Hot Springs.
We have to pay for it.
Because of the big bridge grant. We would, we qualified to get the grant on the Jennings Bridge, but our score will not be high enough to get it on Minnetoka. And so we would have to pay for the entire.
I thought they were working on getting our score higher.
Well, they did, and we, we really blew an opportunity last year to get the Jennings Bridge higher, because it really doesn't have an emergency access or exit under the University Bridge that isn't, isn't, that bridge is too old. It doesn't qualify. And we would have garnered, I think it's 10 additional points. We would have.
Twenty.
Twenty additional points would have put us in the range of getting that grant this year. And we did, we missed out on that. So we paid for the engineering design to help our score. And so now we've got, you know, we're probably near the top of the list. And so that puts us behind on doing the Minnetoka Bridge as far as getting the big, the grant from the state DOT on that. So it would actually cost us more as a city to do it at the same time.
I just would hate to see us not do the bridge if it needs to be doing and do the cantilever sidewalk in its place. And I wanna be sure we do the right thing at the right time.
Yeah, and we certainly, and we certainly will. Obviously, just from appearances and inspections, it appears that the Jennings Bridge is in worse shape. We've got corrosion problems, problems with the deck, whereas the Minnetoka has not had those deck problems.
It's underneath is what you did.
Yeah, and obviously, if that deteriorates at a, to add much faster rate, that would improve our score also. So it's not like we, we aren't going to, we aren't going to forget it, but we've also gotta be judicious with our funding.
I would just remembering what was said at that meeting by those engineers.
Yes. Moving on, just several things to report. I wanna just highlight again, we did get some great press on the Freedom Trail expansion, both in our local newspaper, Rapid City Journal, and along with KOTA TV. And I think we can thank Tracy, Deli, and the city crews, along with our Parks and Recreation Committee for the hard work and effort they did in making that happen. And that's a good, a good story for Hot Springs, because it brought a lot of attention, good attention to our community. And it certainly adds quality of life to our citizens and those who visit Hot Springs. Gives an opportunity for people to do things and stay here a little bit longer. We've got two other potential good news stories. Boulder Falls is nearing completion. And again, that's something that we as a community can celebrate, not only because of what it does for potential economic development, but also we have a very unique and sustainable low-impact design. It minimizes the cost of construction without having to do curb and gutter. We use natural drainage rather than culverts. The water is to drain off as it would naturally. And so we don't have to worry about storm drain permits and the flooding by, that would possibly have a chance of increasing as you direct water into a certain area. And I think there's a lot of interest in our area to incorporate that type of design. And so we want to again highlight that as a win for Hot Springs, really a double win of what we've done for the environment and also what we've done for our community as far as economic development. The other thing that, when KOTA TV was down, I mentioned the fact that we were considering solar power for our city buildings. And they thought that was a very interesting story to follow. And I think that's a unique opportunity we have to prepare ourselves for the future, to save some money in the future. And it's something that certainly is worth considering. So I'm anxious for all of you to hear that proposal and get your thoughts and input on that. Another exciting thing, I had an opportunity last Monday to attend the Airport Advisory Committee meeting. And, you know, we talked a lot about the nuts and bolts of operating airport and about the upcoming Pete Lean and Sons contract. But what kind of got me charged up was the board's, as we sat and talked about, a vision for the future of our airport. It's not just a place that people can come in, take off, and land, or we can put a fire plane, although those things are important. I think we've got to look with a vision to make that airport grow and attract aviation-related businesses into our community. That's not gonna be an easy thing. Not something that you can snap your fingers. But I think it's important that we let the world know that we are open to accept that sort of thing, probably beginning with just a simple maintenance complex. Aircraft require periodic inspections. Our pilots that are based out of here have to go all over the area to find a mechanic to do those inspections. Why can't we have something like that here? There are little shops, avionics repair areas, holster repair, and so forth that could fit very easily on our airport. And so we've talked with Shedco, and I think that's something that we can certainly shoot for. One other thing that was very interesting, and we see across the country, is airports that have an airpark or housing area where people can land on the runway, taxi off, up to their front door, jump out of their airplane, and go in. We've got some outstanding property out there that we could create a little airpark development, again, bringing people into our area, interest into our area, growth into our airport. And so I think that was the exciting thing, that we've got a board, airport manager, that has a look to develop that airplane, airport in the area of economic development, bringing businesses to our community. So I hope we can follow through and in the years and days ahead can attract some of these businesses, certainly with the addition of natural gas at the feet line. I think we have a prime opportunity to develop some of that property into something that produces some income for our community. And again, Bob, I wanna thank you for the Reserve Police Officer proposal. I think that has, it has a lot of merit. And I hope that we can read through that. And if you offer or have any suggestions, please let, let Bob know, and we can look at giving that a trial run. It was interesting to attend our last department hit meeting, and one of the things that caught my ear was a report from the Mueller Center Manager, Chris Katkey. As you know, we got a new sound system as a result of the Miss South Dakota Pageant for the theater. And we've never really had a good sound system in the gymnasium. And Chris took it upon himself to make some adjustments and try and put a system together that works in the gymnasium. And guess what? We do have a system that works. No additional expense. And I guess I'd kinda like to give him what I would call a miser award for helping save the cities some money. And I think it's important that the citizens know that we have people like that that are willing to look for ways that we can save money and save you, the taxpayers, money. And I really appreciate that, that attitude. And I hope we can continue to foster that, because it's evident in many of the other departments also. And that's all I have for my report. At this time, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel matters.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel matters.
Seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we will have a decision to make out. Okay, looks like we've got everyone here. We'll reconvene the council at 8:26 and move on to our final item, item K on personnel. And I'd accept a motion to accept the personnel action listed there, item K.
Motion for Jim Lively, CAP Class II Maintenance Operator Decrease from 1604 to 1555 effective 11/6/17.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept item K in personnel. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time, I'd accept a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.